The time is six P M on this being the third day of November twenty twenty two. I call this meeting in the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order, sorry.
I got it, I got it. Got it. Start again. Maybe you go ahead. Okay, let me go ahead. The time is six oh one P M on this third day of November twenty two. And I call this meeting in the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. If I can have the sort of the now do the prayer and. While we're getting these rights.
Loving and gracious God, you're indeed the giver of all good gifts. And we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events. And for our faculty, for our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and their confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to leave with integrity so that our decisions reflect what is right and what is good. Help us to make decisions that are for the good of all those and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
I pray to the industry with a lot of hack, but in the United States.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next I have is a roll call, Miss Miss Ramos.
Thank you, ma'am. Miss Lupita Cepeda. Jorge Katie Delgado.
Present.
Taki Levin Ramos, present. Cynthia Maris. Absent. Mercury Martinez Junior.
Present.
Doctor Henry Escarranza. Esteban Rangel, absent. Karina Lisondo, absent. Tita Cantubella.
Present.
You have a form.
Thank you, Miss Ramos. That the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Next item that I have is approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of September twenty ninth, twenty twenty second.
Motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Martinez and I have a second by Mr. Ramos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item we have is public testimony. Do we have anybody that signed up? Okay, thank you. Next item we have recognition introductions of personnel, any personnel actions for the month. We have five eight years of service recognition, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Yes, Madam Chair. In view of the fact that we have an election of our our Board of Trustees coming up, two of our board members will be stepping down from our board after many years of service and certainly we want to appreciate their service. We'd like to start with a short video of Doctor Henry Carranza first. In recognition of his service, this is six years of service to the Laredo College family. And so if you'll direct your attention to the screen space.
All right. Good.
Doctor Carranza, on behalf of your Laredo College family, we'd like to thank you for your six years of of service unselfishly. And I know you dedicated a great deal of time and effort to making sure that the decisions that were made on this board were in the best interest of our students, our faculty, and our staff. So on behalf of all of us, thank you so much for your time and your efforts here. We will miss you and we wish you a wonderful retirement from this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of your service.
Uh huh.
If you know more. We're going to go ahead and. This time.
Thank you. Also, it's family of the one that did. And we begin a new day.
Oh, my God. Yeah.
One, two, three. In. Oh, yeah.
Let me just say that I thank everybody. I enjoyed myself. I did the best I could. And there were some changes, but the changes were the good. And that is very important that our present board and the board to come on board, a few that are going to come on board. I hope they continue in the future for the rate of college. And I thank you very much on the bottom of my heart.
Madam Chair, the other recognition I will dispense for a later time, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Doctor Carranza. We will miss you.
Thank you.
The next item is five B, continued partnership with United Independent School District for new early college high schools at Alexander High School and United High School. Doctor Minita Ramirez.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to bring attention and I was hoping that Doctor Gonzalez was here, I mean, Mr. Gonzalez from U I S D was here. I don't know that, did anybody show up from U I C? No. They were going to try to make it. They were having a meeting. But I wanted to recognize the Board of Trustees and the superintendent, Mr. David Gonzalez of United Independent School District for their partnership with Laredo College. Very recently, two weeks ago, we had a a signing and announcement of an additional an addendum for our M O U with them for two new early college high schools that they have recently approved. One at Alexander High School and one at United High School. We will continue to partner with U I S D and we will continue to offer them our dual credit courses and and support services for their students. So I just wanted to to bring that to light and to the board. I was hoping they'd be here. I guess they they may not have been able to get out in time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Ramirez. The next item is five C, twenty twenty two Annual Lewis Stokes Midwest Regional Center of Excellence Conference Poster Competition. Ms. Rosemary Awedroviokas.
Good afternoon, members of the board, executive team, Rosemary Awedroviokas. For the record, I'm actually here today accompanied by student Valeria Rivera to announce that she presented her research at the Lewis Stokes Midwest Regional Center of Excellence Conference this past October twenty eighth through the thirtieth, in which she presented her poster on the effects of toner and temperature in an All-Star cream that she created. Valeria is a sophomore majoring in biology and he plans to pursue a degree in neuroscience. We are very excited because she was awarded the People's Choice Award for the poster presentation and she is in potential talks for potential funding for her research.
All right. Very congratulations.
Congratulations. So on behalf of the board directors and our president, we're going to present your certificate achievement. The certificate is presented to Valeria Rivera for being selected to present at the twenty twenty two Annual Lewis Stokes Midwest Regional Center of Excellence Conference Ecosystem Diversity Partnership and Empowerment, presented this third day of November two thousand twenty two. Congratulations. The next item is five B, Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, Texas Transfer Advisory Committee on the Discipline of Kinesiology Exercise Science Appointee, Doctor Armando Perez, Doctor Maricela Rodriguez Tejina.
Maricela Rodriguez Tejina, Provost Vice President of Academic Affairs. I'm going to ask Doctor Armando Perez to come stand by me because he was recently appointed by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board to serve on the Transfer Advisory Council for Kinesiology and Exercise Science. He's going to be a big part of developing the curriculum that is necessary for transfer opportunities for our students. So he was appointed by the state. He's been with us for should I say this year, over twenty three years. And probably he has been a professor of kinesiology, mathematics, college readiness, and he oversees our wellness programs. We're very proud that he will be representing Laredo College on this very important endeavor.
Right.
On behalf, Dr. Perez.
Doctor Perez.
Doctor Perez, on behalf of the board of directors and our president's certificate of achievement, the certificate is presented to Doctor Armando Perez for being appointed to the Texas Transfer Framework Field of Study Discipline Specific Subcommittee for Kinesiology Exercise Science, presented this third day of November two thousand twenty two. Congratulations. Thank you. Next item we have is five E Introduction of Personnel, Personal Action, Doctor Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is quite an honor to work with such distinguished staff members and faculty. As you can see with Doctor Perez, we have some wonderful opportunities through the coordinating board to nominate folks and and I do want to recognize the fact that Doctor Beating Out nominated Doctor Perez for this honor and it is because of his scholarship and work that he was recognized for this particular committee. It is quite important for our employees to be recognized for their efforts at the state level. And I I think it's just another indication of the kind of work that we're doing here at our college that we can be proud of. So I do want to point that out. And along with that, we we have had some reassignments, reclassifications and and some new hires that I'd like to introduce today. I hope everybody's here. I'm going to introduce those that are not able to attend today first. With property inventory, Clarissa Aguilar, with copy and mail services clerk Roxana Estrada and student center attendant Daniel Medina and faculty secretary for the A D N and V S N program, Michelle Maris. These folks could not attend today, but we're very proud of the fact that they've accepted positions with us. New hires or promotions to our scholarship coordinator, Ms. Brenda Diaz. Brenda's already. Brenda's already off and running with our scholarships and so we're we're very pleased with with the progress. Continuing Education Secretary, Ms. Rosa Vio. Human Resources Technician and for records, Ruben Rodriguez. Our new Associate Vice President for Enrollment Management is Jessica Trevino. She, we just got back from Corpus, so she was returning to the vehicle. So hopefully when she comes in, I'll I'll introduce her to you all. South Campus Librarian, Jacob Rudolph. Master Electrician, Jose Angel Flores. H VAC Technician, Raoul Gonzalez. I do want to point out that both Mo Salcan and Raoul have been with the college. These are promotions for them. They've they've done an outstanding job in our in our physical plant department. So thank you, gentlemen, for your patience and all the work that you do. Teacher Assistant at Camilo Prada, Cassandra Varga. Did I miss anybody? No, okay, good. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for being here today. I appreciate it. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing every single day to make lives better for our students and for the departments that you're working in. So congratulations to all of you.
On behalf of the board, congratulations and welcome to Laredo College. Thank you. Next item I have is Faculty Senate Report, Mr. Cash Masahani.
Good evening, board members. Board members, President of the College, Provost, Administrators, Faculty and Staff, and Members of the Community. For the record, my name is Prakash Manson Honey. I'm a Professor of Government and the Faculty Senate President. But before I get started, I wanted to very quickly say congratulations to Miss Lopez, the new Associated Student President of the organization. But I know she'll be coming up here in a little bit, but I wanted to congratulate her as well. And I also wanted to bid Doctor Carranza farewell. I know we've worked together on projects and committees and here on the board. And so we've had a lot of history working together. So I wish you farewell. All right, very quickly, I'll make my report quick because I only have a couple of items here that I wanted to update the board with. Really quickly, I just wanted to talk about our Board of Trustees candidate forums. As I mentioned the last time I was at this podium, we had two forums. And I wanted to say we've been hosting these forums for about a decade now. Our very first one was in two thousand twelve. It's now twenty twenty two. And we started at the M F A under Doctor Malala's leadership and we've continued under every president and we've had a lot of fun. Our first forum was October twentieth at the Student Leasen Center. And that forum, as you can see at the very bottom, was hosted by the students of the Laredo College Honors Program, specifically the students that are enrolled in my government course. And so I'm very proud of those students and of their ability to to learn about government in a way that actually allows them to apply those skills. And what a wonderful place then Laredo College to provide that hands-on learning activity for these students. Our second forum was October twenty seventh, and this one was led by the Faculty Senate. And so those was that one was led by Faculty Senators along with myself as President of the Faculty Senate. And there were a few board members in attendance in both of these. And so they went really well. And I just wanted to show a couple of the images that we have there, including of our presidents and vice presidents and some of the candidates that enjoyed our first of the two candidate forums was attended by seven of the nine candidates. And the second one was attended by eight of the nine candidates. And so that was really cool. And I just wanted to let everyone know, and I'll work with Mr. Rodriguez to get this out there. There are recordings of both of these. And the second one, since it was a little bit more of an instrument environment, it really provides a very useful guide for anyone in the city, in the community, in particular here at L C, to make decisions about whom to vote for. So not to get political, but the videos are very informative. And so I hope that people can consider watching those. And so we'll send that out. The other item I wanted to mention is that the Faculty Senate is currently working. I know I met with Doctor Rodriguez Tejina to update you on this matter. We are working on getting more faculty up within the Faculty Senate and outside of the Faculty Senate involved in various initiatives that are going around the campus. And so we brought in quite a few names here of faculty that will be involved in various committees. And these committees are going to be very useful because I think they will be able to achieve many things. But two importantly, number one is to give faculty who not necessarily had an opportunity to learn about how the process works, learn about how that process works and learn how it can be very difficult sometimes. It's a lot easier sometimes to say, let's do this, but sometimes it's a little bit harder once you know about the process. And so it's going to be a very educational experience for some that haven't served. And the other is to give perhaps other opportunities to faculty to point out things that I may not have pointed out in meetings with the provost, meetings with the president, and meetings with other administrative officials and if not, if necessary, the board in the future, right? And so that folks can really get another idea. But I just wanted to let you know, we really are targeting getting more faculty involved for various reasons, right? To get more opinions out there and to also get more experience and education as to the system work. So I'm very proud to be overseeing a faculty body that is involved. For some of the members who served on the board for quite some time, you may recall that there was a time when this organization that I represented, the Faculty Senate, was fractured, right? That there were divisions and departments that were not part of it. Now I can say not only are we not fractured nor divided, but we are such so unified that we have this much participation from all the various areas of the campus. And so I'm very proud of that. And last on these here, I just wanted to mention that we continue to work with the administration and continue to be open arms in whatever goals that the administration has. We are working on several of them together. I'm on a number of committees that Doctor Rodriguez has put me on. I think so many committees that make sure you want another one. And so I just wanted to thank you and the administration and the board for its continued success and continued support. And we, as I always say, remain with our sleeves folded, ready to work on any initiative that the president, the vice president, or the board has. And so thank you all and good luck. And Doctor Carranza, farewell. Even.
Thank you, Mr. Masahani. Any questions? No. Next item is Associated Student Organization Report, Ms. Maricela Lopez.
Good evening, Madam President. With the board members, Doctor Ramirez, administrators, and guests. My name is Carmilio Castillo Junior, Associate Vice President for Student Life and Engagement here at Laredo College. It is my pleasure to introduce this year's twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three Associated Student President, Elected President, A S O, Ms. Maricela Natalie Lopez, who is a sophomore majoring in System Engineering and is graduated from Preparatoria Number Five, Nuevo Leon, Mexico in two thousand and twenty one. She's currently posing as president, but also is the Vice President for Five Theta Kappa. And as a part of the student body of Laredo College, her job is to be the voice of the students at both campuses. She is the authorities known about projects and ideas and is she is really and ready excited to work with the Paulo Minos at both campuses. She would like to talk about a little bit about herself. She loves to play basketball since two thousand and fifteen. And thanks to playing basketball, she is very competitive and she's learned to strive and succeed excellence. Math is one of her favorite subjects and thanks to, I hope I said this right, come on, right? Come on, in which she completed all levels of math and English. She enjoys a lot of hobbies about playing basketball, reading, tutoring, painting, doing exercises, and just playing, hanging out with friends. So board members, staff, faculty, guests, are associated to her, Ms. Maricela Lopez.
Good evening, board members. President of the Board Member, Lupita Cepeda. Doctor Ramirez, administrators, and guests. My name is Maricela Natalie Lopez, A S O, President for the Record. I would like to provide everyone an update on activities of L C students that participated this month. File Fest was on October twenty second at the Sound Campus, was a big success for students organizations. Seventeen student club participated in organizational and fundraising booth. In addition to club success, our training station was able to fundraise six hundred dollars in the event, which will be used for emergency aid. One, one of our organizations, Five Theta Kappa, traveled to the city of Houston, Texas from October the seventh to ninth to a leadership conference, which took, okay, which took place at Houston's University. I will also mention that a group of students went to the Associated Program in Campus Activities Conference to meet and with possible guests and speakers engaging. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. The chair recognizes trustees, and if you're not in attendance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go back to. Madam Chair, I'd like to go back to our recognitions, please.
Yes.
If that's okay.
Yes.
As part of the last board meeting for Trustee Cynthia Modis, we have put together a video about her time here. It is no easy task, I know, to serve on any board for 30 years. And we certainly are very grateful to Ms. Modis's dedication to Laredo College in different capacities, but certainly in her capacity as trustee. So, Mr. Thomas, will you play the video, please?
No.
It's a small snippet of 30 years, I know. But certainly, we want to thank you again and wish you much success in your future, and we'll miss you on the board.
I will miss you all too. It's been quite a journey. I started to work here right after college, 1972. So, I was commenting the other day to JD when you talked about the 75th anniversary. I said, "I spent almost three quarters of my life here." Because right out of college, I started working here. I worked here for over 20 years. I started teaching adult basic education and went into the vocational technical programs. My last job was the Director of Economic Development under Dr. Roger Worsley. And I left because of illness in the family with my mom. Then, two years later, somebody said, "Why don't you run for the board? You've been one of us, you've been there, you've been a teacher, you know, and an employee, and so you understand our needs. So, why don't you run for the board?" And I said, "I have no political experience, I don't know how to do this, and without any money." And so, with a shoestring budget of $500, my father thought it was crazy. And so, we embarked on that journey, and all the employees and everybody. So, you know, the rest is history. I went against an incumbent who had been here for 10 years, and I thought, "Who am I, right?" And before I knew it, at the end of the day, I remember that evening of elections, you know, it was Dr. Roger Worsley, and he turned around and he says, "You made it, you won." And I'm like, "So, now what? I'm on the board now, and so now what happens?" So, quite a journey. Like I said, my life has been spent here. Too many people to thank, you know. It was over the years, some of you are still here, some of them are already gone. But certainly, these memories will always stay in the edge of my heart because I learned to grow professionally, you know, sentimentally with each and every one of you that I came across the path. And even on this board, you know, I was President a couple of times and Vice President of this board. So, again, all of that has, I think, brought me to this juncture in my life that has, I feel, made me, you know, a well-rounded person, for lack of a better word, because I've been there, done that, every bit of everything. So, thank you all. Thank you all for putting up with me and for, you know, especially the board here and all our times that we disagreed, but we agree to respect each other and agree. And that's one thing that I also treasure and I love about this board because no matter what the changes, we were able to just stick together and, you know, bring that united front. And you all are very, very special to me. And whatever this journey takes me to, you know, the next level of my life, right as I close my last chapter of my life, I will always, always have this institution very, very dear to my heart because, like I said, I grew up here. I grew up here, this is my second home away from home, and I ended up being more than education. And I've always been a staunch advocate and supporter for that. So, God bless you all. Continue to do the hard work that you're doing now. Take care of our kids, take care of this community. Everybody comes and knocks on our doors wanting some type of service or some type of education, you know, help them out, because I know you will. Because you're here because you love what you do, and you have a passion, a passion for it as well. So, thank you again. Thank you, everybody. Very special.
Thank you, Ms. Modis. Now, we have on the board and the President of our college and our Faculty and Staff Administration, we have a plaque to present to you for either of your readers to start. And we will miss you, Ms. Modis.
Thank you.
Make sure.
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to, as part of our recognition of our new staff, I do want to take a moment to recognize Ms. Jessica for being our new Associate Vice President for Enrollment Management. Jessica, thank you for being here.
Congratulations. The next item I have is Classified Staff Council Report. Ms. Elizabeth Chiva Leno.
Good evening, Miss President. Good evening, Board Members. I'm a little nervous. You look like professionals. I was like, "No, I can't do it, I'm shaking." We won't bite. I already did today.
The interim President for the Classified Staff Council Organization, our President, due to some unforeseen circumstances, was unable to continue, you know, being the President, so she had to step down. So, this is all new to me. I will become more prepared next time. We haven't participated as much as we would have liked, but we did participate at the Fun Fest. We did the, what we call the whole, the head and the whole board. In other words, you put your head inside the hole, they take pictures, you know. And the families loved it, they were all excited, the children. They took pictures with their cellphones, and that was good PR because, you know, social media is big. So, we really were very happy and excited with that. We do plan on doing more activities and events come for November, December. So, we're looking forward to that as well. The classified members consist of 235. And we're really excited with this new year that's coming in convocation. We're going to elect new officers, so we're also looking forward to that. That is all I have to report for today. I'll make it quick and simple, but next time I'll make it longer. With also a PowerPoint too.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the Fall Fest, it was very, very well attended. I know JD was there, I was there. But it was very well attended, everybody seemed to be having a good time. Students were manning the booths and just having a really, really good time. So, thank you to everybody that worked it.
Just for information, Madam Chair, the student clubs and organizations deposited over $18,000 that they raised that night. So... That was a very good thing. They ran out of food twice, went to the booths, and so it was a wonderful event. So, thank you to all of the students, the faculty and staff who helped put it on. It was a huge, huge success for all of us. Thank you.
And all the staff at the Sound Campus as well. I know they work really hard. Mr. Yu was there with all his staff in plant facilities, putting everything together and taking it all down when it was over. The music was good, it was good dancing music, so. Next time, we all need to make it. Next item I have is number nine, Consent Agenda.
I have to move, Madam Chair.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, and I have a second by Mr. De Gallo to approve 9A, 9B, 9C, all the way to 9K. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And all the consent agenda has already been discussed in committee meetings during the week. Next time, we have discussion and possible action. We have 10A approval for out-of-country travel from Ms. Jessica Gravino and Ms. Andrea López to Toronto, Ontario, Canada for the Strategic Enrollment Management Conference as for Board Policy CJ Local Transportation Management, Dr. Fred Solis.
Good evening, Madam President. Esteemed Board Members, President Ramirez, colleagues and visitors. This evening, Administration is requesting approval for out-of-country travel in which actually one will only be attending. Initially, we thought that we would be able to send our dynamic duo that we recently had that helps us out to this conference, but unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, will only be sent in the just like that, to the venue at this time. This particular conference is a conference that focuses solely on strategic enrollment management and as we contemplate in developing and improving our own, this is a great opportunity for the Strategic Enrollment Associate VP to be able to start crafting and getting ideas as far as what other institutions are doing, not only across the country, but across other areas of the world.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. De Gallo, I have a second by Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion?
Of course. Just for legal, do we need to be specific since only one of them is going instead of both?
The... Lasting your attorney for Laredo College, the agenda item now does read both individuals. I think that if one is just withdrawing, it's okay for you to approve 10A as a whole. That other individual will just not be trapped.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Solis. When we dress warm, the thing is going to be full. A little bit. 10B is approval of the 2023/2024 Laredo College Academic Calendar. Dr. Fred Solis.
It is hard to believe that we're actually presenting an academic calendar a year away, but because we are moving ahead, working ahead to start our registration periods for this particular year, we have already coordinated with our educational partners as best as we possibly can the 2023/24 academic school calendar. In adherence with our academic partners, we are keeping to the week of Thanksgiving break as well as the week of spring break to coincide with our NYSD and LISD partners as well.
And if I might add, Madam Chair, the idea is to have two years, two academic years of academic calendar in the book. So, hopefully by early spring, we'll bring you the 24/25 as well. And so, as we plan strategically for enrollment development and our programming development for our academic departments, we'd like to have all of this already tied into the system so that there is advanced planning for advising of students and end dates for graduation. So, not only are we telling students, "When are you going to start your program? When are you going to finish?" It's all part of the strategic enrollment management plan that we're going to start to develop.
So, move, Madam.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second by Mr. De Gallo. Any discussion? Not heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Solis.
Thank you.
10C, Approval of the Engineering Technician Associate Reply Science Degree Program. Dr. Maricela López de Guedina and Mr. Eduardo Hernandez.
Maricela Rodriguez de Guedina approves Vice President of Academic Affairs. Dean, Hernandez and I were here to present two new programs that we want to bring to the table. As you know, with workforce, especially in the workforce, we're constantly assessing the community needs, the industry demands, and we strongly feel that these two new programs will open the doors for many students. One with the engineering technician will open the door for students that may not qualify for the academic pathway route. But now with an engineering technician, we can start them off with this workforce pathway route. And then the construction management. I know we have a presentation for you all.
Good evening, Board Members. Dr. Ramirez, Eduardo Hernandez, you know, workforce education. New programs are always exciting and a labor of... But we were here to present two new programs. The first one is an engineering technology program. You know, this program allows students, like Dr. De Guedina mentioned, to enter the engineering field, not necessarily as an engineer, but as an engineering technician. So, this opens the door to careers and, again, the engineering fields diverse. It could be civil engineering, mechanical engineering, electrical engineering. So, the program is made broad for that purpose. There are two tracks in the program. One is the General Engineering Technician Program, and the other one is a survey engineering technology program. So, both areas are in demand. These are AAS degrees. They do include a one semester certificate and a one-year certificate embedded into the AAS. They also provide potential industry credentials and surveying certificates, CAT certificates, and GIA certificates.
Any questions?
Any questions? I'm going to make a motion to approve the engineering technician. So, I have a motion by Mr. Ramos, I have a second. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is 10B.
He was going to talk about the construction management. I don't know if you want to hear about it.
I approve one of the Construction Management Associate Reply Science Degree Program. Dr. Maricela López de Guedina and Mr. Eduardo Hernandez.
The second program is the Construction Management Program. Laredo is going through a tremendous growth and will be... And we will continue to grow in the next coming decades. The community voiced their need for this type of program in construction management. There's been a lot of coordination with the construction projects. And just when we met with developers, there's a sense of urgency and just planning out these projects and coordinating these projects and avoiding any delays. So, with that in mind, we put together this curriculum with the assistance of the external stakeholders. And again, it's geared towards managing construction projects in general. Again, it's a AAS degree, and it has a one semester certificate and a one-year certificate built into the AAS. There's industry credentials, possible embedded credentials of Ultra-Thirteen Construction for certification, CAT certificate, and GIA certificate.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Mr. Hernandez, what would be some of the individuals that we were looking at to be able to participate in the program? So, coming out of high school, of course, right? Are we... Is the recruitment going to be to recent graduates? Or... Um, are we, um, is the recruitment going to be to recent graduates or individuals who maybe had already had some sort of career in, in the construction, uh, business? And then maybe we're offering them an associate in science or, uh, it's an associate in, in applied sciences?
Yeah, correct.
Um, who are, who are the individuals that would be looking to enroll in this type of program?
It pretty much is all of the above, right? Uh, from, from the high school graduates to those who are looking to upscale. Uh, they might have a strong background in construction itself, but not necessarily the managerial skills, so that's what we would fill in those gaps.
Okay.
So it's really open to, to whoever's interested in either entering the, the new career field or upskilling in their current, uh, role.
And, and what are, there's some of the ways that we could do the recruitment part? Like, you know, with the associate, with a, a Bachelor's of Applied, uh, Leadership, the organizational leadership, we go out to the community, we call it to the community, but how would we, how would we manage to do something like this when most of the individuals are working? And they work eight to five, or they work seven to six, or whatever. So how, how can we find ways to recruit those individuals?
So we, we've had tremendous success with informational sessions, uh, with the help of marketing and promotion of these, uh, sessions. Uh, as a matter of fact, just, just last night, we had our first official fire science, uh, session, and we had about eighty people in attendance.
Awesome.
Right, so it was, uh, the, it was, the cause was packed. It was just a lot of people. Uh, a- and that's the strategy that we're gonna continue to do. Uh, you know, so we're gonna leverage our, this, this particular program is gonna be under our industrial technology, uh, trades departments, or we have the HVAC, the electrical, so we're gonna also leverage of those, uh, graduates who want, may want to continue into the, uh, the mani- management side of it. But also, you know, the, the strategy of informational session has worked very well for our homeland security or fire science program. And we typically hold in the evenings, uh, we have one going on today for homeland security that starts from seven to nine. So, uh, we've had success with that, so that's probably, uh, the strategy that we're gonna continue to do, and then going out to the high, high schools as well.
So out of the eighty individuals that, um, that came yesterday to that, uh, other seminar that you, that you had, are we monitoring how many students from those eighty are coming into the college?
So.
Are we tracking?
Yeah, well, the, the initial tracking that we had is from those eighty students that, that showed up. Actually, there was ninety-seven people that showed up, but eighty students, so we had a QR code to, you know, download the application to go into the program, so eighty students downloaded the application. So that's the initial tracking we have right now. Uh, we're still gonna see how we actually turn in the application for the program.
Okay, thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez and then Mr. Martinez and then Dr. Ramos.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Appreciate it. Chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Martinez.
Kudos to y'all for doing this and I commend you because back in the day, you know, back in the early century, when I was here, we had the construction program. And it was, you know, it was very attractive, and we coordinated and, and dealt with the, uh, what back then was the manpower program, which is to value your workforce solutions people. And you know, that partnership there helped us a lot. We did also the, the, uh, recruitment from the high school, so. But, uh, it was very successful, then it just, I guess, died off and went off into the sunset. So I'm glad that we revived it because it is a very important, you know, type of a, of a career or profession, really, that people need to get these skills on. So again, kudos and thank you, thank you, bring it back. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
Uh, in reference to, uh, the courses that would include practical hands-on labs, uh, which is, of course, very, very important. Have you been able to have those contacts with the individual, uh, companies that are involved in these different, uh, areas?
Yes, sir. So part of the, of the process is, uh, before we present, uh, a program like this to, and the internal curriculum committee is that we hold an exploratory advisory committee with stakeholders. So we've had developers, uh, the, the local developers, uh, in that advisory, uh, committee, and they were all willing to uh, be a, a, a training site for our students.
Excellent, this is excellent. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
Yes, this type of program were needed a long time ago, and, and I keep bringing it up quite a few times. And I think that the young man wants the marketing charts, uh, they will jump at it because they look at the certificates, they look at something they can, they can share within themselves, something that they can show their family that they work, that they can go out there and work in the community. This type of jobs that project and things that are needed. They're needed and I cannot tell you how much they're needed. But now that you're gonna provide a certificate to that, it's gonna really catch on fire. So just, just, that is just one area. I think that you just be patient and it'll blossom.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Mister Ramos, I have a second by Mister Legado. Any more discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is executive session. We have item eighty, level three grievance hearing filed by a professional employee as for board policy DGVA local, personnel management relations, employee grievances, closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one dot zero-seven-one and five-five-one zero-seven-four. Eleven B is discussion to review the board self-evaluation results as required by board policy BCG local, or internal organization board evaluation and by Southern Association of Colleges and Exploits Commission on Colleges, SAC, SCOC, Principles of Accreditation, closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one dot zero-seven-one and five-five-one dot zero-seven-four. I have a motion by Mister Legado, I have a second by Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I want you, we're going into executive session. The time is now six fifty-three, and the board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one and five-five-one dot zero-seven-four of the Texas Government Code to discuss agenda items eleven A and eleven B. Thank you.
This is all the government. My, I'm sure like I'm already. Does anyone have a call?
This is. Yeah, you want to carry? Good. If I'm gonna hit you now.
Every year.
Close and we're out. We will share. We'll say.
You don't care.
Okay. I mean, moving borders. I wish. Oh, I remember. It can be, um. Small. We have, I mean, good. We have this paid home burn. And I don't know. We were both working. Um. I don't know. I appreciate. You know. It's not. In the group. And it's something that's. It was true.
The reason.
Well.
Um. What do you mean?
All right. What's new? We seem growing up.
It was. My.
I'm trying to look. Yeah, she didn't know about. Right. Any law? Do you know? The reading meeting from closed session. The time is now eight thirty-three and the board took no action and executive session will take appropriate action on items necessary as discussed in closed section. In closed session, sorry. So item number twelve A, level three grievance hearing filed by a professional employee. Do I hear a motion? Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
I move that we deny the grievance under the reading requested. That is my motion.
Also, I have a motion and I have a second by Ms. Mares. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Twelve B is review of the board self-evaluation results that are required by Board Policy VP G local. Board Internal Organization Board Evaluation and by Southern Association of Colleges. The School Commission on Colleges is a C S D O C Principles of accreditation.
Right? No, no.
Well, we went over the board evaluation. So I just need a motion to approve.
So.
So I have a motion by Mr. The second by Dr. Caso. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is President's Report and Communication Campus Police Personnel and Travel Reports. Dr. Minita Ramis.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, uh. Board members. Right now, as far as a police department report, there are no, there's no, uh, action to report at all, uh, there. Uh. We've already, uh. Discussed some of the other matters that are, are pending. I do want to, uh, call your attention to a couple of travel that will be coming up for me. Uh, next week on Tuesday evening and Wednesday morning. Uh, I'll be traveling to Corpus Christi to meet with the South Texas Community College Presidents and Commissioner Keller to discuss the new, uh, the newly, uh. Um. The redesign, I guess it's the redesign of our proposal for financing for community colleges across the state. Uh, we'll be meeting with him, uh, at Delmar College and so, uh. Tuesday afternoon and, uh, Wednesday I will be in Corpus Christi. In addition to that, on November the ninth. Um, there is a, uh, Texas Commission on Community College Finance meeting, um, that, that. As part of that particular meeting, we're going to meet as an entire, uh, group is as well. And so. November fourteenth and sixteenth, we have a team of people going to Dallas, Texas for the Texas Pathways. The two are where. Uh, one of the initiatives that we're, um, continuing to work on is our pathways program to, to assist in our students. In, uh, timely graduation. And so we're, we're partnering with, um, several community colleges from Texas. Uh, Tyler being, uh, I'm. Kilgore, pardon me, I sympathize. Kilgore College being our partner on that. So we'll be, um. Uh, statewide meeting as I think Pathways Institute. December third through the sixth, we have our Saks meeting in Atlanta, Georgia. We also have our leadership team attending that. And then, uh, upon our return. We have a coordinating board, uh, a Texas Higher Education Leadership Conference in Austin on December seventh and eighth. So there's, um, quite a bit of stuff coming up for us. Um. We, I, we've also included in your packet, uh, several upcoming events. You have flyers and, uh. Time and there's an entire schedule for you there. Inclusively, we have our upcoming veterans, uh, event on the tenth. Uh, you have a, a poster. Yes, uh, for you with all of the details. Please let us know if you're going to be in attendance. Um, we want to make sure that. Uh, we recognize everybody accordingly. Uh, in addition, um. We have, uh, uh. A couple of other things that have happened since, uh, today we were in Corpus Christi. We got early this morning. Uh, we signed an MOU with Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi for our students to transfer seamlessly from Laredo College to A&amp;M Corpus Christi. Uh, we're working on a, uh, dual admissions program with them so that our students are admitted to Laredo College and simultaneously admitted. Into A&amp;M Corpus Christi. So upon completing their associate's degree, they don't need to reapply to A&amp;M Corpus Christi, assuming that they meet all of the requirements. There's several others like that coming up soon. Um. We will have our Thanksgiving lunches coming up. Uh, I think you all got your invitations for that. I hope that you can join us. Um, and yesterday we had a very nice press conference, um. That, uh, announced our upcoming, uh, seventy-fifth anniversary gala, March twenty-fourth, uh, twenty twenty-three in. Uh, our Kason Center. So thank you for those of you that were with us yesterday. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Would you mention on the, uh, the financial? Information that's going to be presented to the legislature in January, in session? You should all got an, an invite in your email. There's going to be a presentation tomorrow at noon. That all board trustees and really everybody is welcome to join in by Zoom. If you want to go ahead and, uh, listen to that presentation, it's going to be done tomorrow at noon, at noon. Uh, thanks, the cat or tax sent it out. Okay. So just have a heart eye for all of you.
And, and just to give you a little bit of background on that, uh, uh. The coordinating board has partnered with the Texas Association of Community Colleges, uh, because. Uh, the governor appointed an interim committee, uh, exploratory committee to, to, to look at community college financing as a whole. Uh, there are lots, there are several of us who are struggling financially. Uh, some community colleges were not only struggling with enrollment, but struggling with population in the communities that they serve. In addition to that, uh, as you all well know, because we service, um. Counties that don't necessarily pay taxes to our, our college, uh, it has created a huge, um.
Negative.
Negative impact. Thank you. Uh, negative impact on, on community colleges across the state. And so the governor appointed to senators, to state reps. Uh, to, to lead the, the charge and then, uh, ask the coordinating board, uh, Commissioner Keller. And then TAC to also participate on that committee. So they've been doing this now for almost ten months. Putting together all the data. They finalized it. The final report will go to the LBB and to, um. And to the governor on the tenth of November, uh, which tomorrow I think they're going to present the final version of that report. Uh, yesterday we received two models, uh, perspective models of what the financing will look like. Uh, Dr. Ariasola and his team are looking at it to determine if either one of those models is selected, what will it mean for the college? And that's what they want to know, um. From all, all of the community colleges. And so we, we're, we're anxiously working on this to try to figure out. How else we can gain our support from, uh, from the state of Texas.
May I? May I make an offer? Officer.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Thank you. I think all of us are aware. The, uh. Uh. The assessment for, for valuation and, and the taxes that are actually applying to Laredo College. They're only within the city limits of the city of Laredo. In contrast to what the majority of other community colleges are throughout the state. Um, many of these community colleges will assess that a taxes on the entire county. And, uh, in some instances to more than one county. That is not the case with this institution. Uh, this institution only assesses and receives, uh, its, uh. Its, uh. Taxes based on the valuations, uh, within the limits of the city of Laredo. And, uh, the rest are outside of the county of where or. Basically not, not, uh, involved whatsoever. And that is, uh, frankly, uh, also in my opinion, part of our problem too. So we, we would be in a, in a much better financial position if that were to be the case, but unfortunately that is not the case.
Now, the CCATT call, the legislative call that I was on today, that I participated, they did ma- make, make mention that we have two hundred and fifty-four. Counties in Texas and only sixty counties pay taxes to Laredo or to colleges. Wow. To the college. So that's very.
Good.
So. But thank you sir. Any, anyone else? Okay. Uh, next item I have is thirteen B, Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math- Mathematics Open House, November tenth, twenty twenty-two. Dr. Odasi Salinas.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Ramis colleagues. Um, I'm Odasi Salinas, you know, arts and sciences. This is just an announcement to let you know that one week from today, November tenth. Between the time before and eight P M at the Kason Center, we will, uh, home from STEAM, uh, open house. Um, next week is STEM week or sometimes now we're including STEAM, V A as part of ours. So STEAM meaning. As for science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics. So these departments are going to showcase their programs. The idea and the hope is to bring awareness to our students, not only the ones here at college, but also in our community. To underrepresented, uh, Hispanic community. So I think the college here is making a strong initiative and various efforts to try to bring the stems. Uh, fields to our community, to our kids and help them to get interested. So it's a, it's a matter of being aware. To help them, uh, to engage with our faculty, our directors. We're also going to open this up as well for our advising, our student services will be there as well. To provide information to our students and hopefully those that come from without or not students yet will one day come over here. Uh, so again, the idea is to promote awareness to our, uh, community and hopefully. One day they will, they will, uh, join the STEM fields or STEAM fields. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Salinas. Any questions? Next item is thirteen C, Laredo College Website Update. Mr. Alper Travis.
Good evening, members of the board and college administration. I just wanted to provide a quick update on the. College website. We launched the new college website design on, on October the fifteenth. So it's, uh, it's finally live and it's out there to the world. Um. It was a collaborative effort. Uh, I know administration was very supportive and the staff in putting the, the website together. I just wanted to, uh, to quickly highlight a couple of items. Again, the navigation was simplified on the website. So if you go to about LC. We have the history of the college, accreditation information, information about the administration, the board of trustees. The calendar, uh, math, news and community resources. Out of this menu, I'm going to highlight, uh, just, uh, four areas. Administration, we simplified, uh, the page. We have the different branches of the institution or, or the organizational chart. One of the areas that's coming very soon is we're actually going to have pictures right here of the, the president and the VPs that represent the different areas. So. If you go, for example, under finance and administration, you'll have the welcome message from our, our CFO. Then you have all the different departments that. Uh, are part of that, uh, division. One of the other areas that I wanted to mention, of course, actually right up here, we have our organizational chart and then towards the bottom under additional, uh. Resources, we have more information about the leadership of the college and our manual policy. I'm going to go back to the menu and I'm going to. I'm going to go back to the menu and I'm going to highlight, of course, we have, uh, page for the board of trustees, um. Information of all the trustees, the agenda, uh, recording of the meetings and the, for the, for the elections that we have right now. The other area that I wanted to highlight, thanks to, uh, Mr. Camarino Castillo and his team, uh, we now have a, a college, uh. Uh, calendar with information for, uh, events that are happening at the college. So if you want to. Uh, find out what's happening at Laredo College, you can go to the calendar and, um, you can get more information. One of the other areas that I want to highlight, uh, out of the same menu is the campus news. PR, uh, we help them develop a website, it's a free reading website where they can have all the articles, uh, related, uh, to the institution. So for example, the science program, we have a photo at the top and then we have the, the story. So this is something that we work very closely with, um. PR, uh, to make happen. Uh, under admissions, of course, admissions and aid, we have all the information for the students to apply to the institution. Um. What happened there? And it goes this way. Uh, that's interesting. Uh, it was working earlier. I'll, I'll double check on that, but we have, uh, a, uh, the, uh, page for, uh, enrollment and so forth. Um, under academic and career programs, we have our academic departments, adult education, uh, continued education, degrees and certificates. Uh, student services, all the different areas for the students, uh, and then campus life, um, they have all the information there. Other academic programs. Um, I'm going to highlight one of the areas that our proposals, uh, put together.
That's interesting. Well, it worked here earlier.
Don't worry.
Yes, I feel like, uh, here it is. Sorry, I feel like a Bill Gates moment. It was going to the old west or, uh. That's when he first introduced, uh, windows, uh, scratched on him. So, uh, Dr. Martina and, and academic department. Uh, we're really part of this particular, uh, page. So this particular page is, uh, um, has all the information about our programs for the institution. Uh, choose your path. So we have a listing of all, uh, the programs that we have at the institution at the Nathan's speed lifting. Uh, so if you prefer just to digest a whole list, you can go through there. Or we have by pathway. So for example, if you're looking for, uh, certificate or degree in education, human protective services. Or health sciences and so forth, you can choose that pathway and you can see all the degrees and certificates that are offered to that area.
Good, wow, that's very good.
Click on one of them, child development, just one of them. And then we have the overview of the program. We have information. Uh, and a plan of study. So some of the, some of the programs and, and maybe Dr. Martina can tell me which one I remember. Some of the programs actually have, uh, videos and so forth that I remember. One of them in particular, I, I don't need to pick any, but I know maybe it's nursing. Let me double check on nursing. I think, uh, the nursing pathway may have some health sciences. I didn't prepare for that one, but I know some of the programs have actually, um, included, uh, additional information. As you can see, this particular program. Under overview has a lot more information. Um, and so forth. So some of them do actually have, um, uh, videos and so forth. Which one's cosmet- cosmetology? Okay. That is, which pathway is that? The, okay. Cosmetology, right, right. Information. So this one does have some additional information here in the plan of study. And again, one of the other things that we did, if, if you want to download this information in a portable format. There's also a way to, to print everything in as a PDF if you prefer to print it out, uh, as a, as a document. Uh, but those, those are the items that I wanted to highlight. Again, we, we, we are receiving feedback. We're working with the departments. Again, this is, uh, a product that we're going to continue working. It's our first step in, in, in improving. Um, as we scroll down, again, we do have our banners highlighting student life, uh, the different programs at the institution. Um, and so forth. As you scroll down, we have, uh, our accolades, again, uh, number one col- number one community college in Texas. Uh, number one community college with the least student depth and nursing, uh, nursing program rank, uh, number one. A D N in the state of Texas. More information about the college, information for future students or current students. Getting ahold of us, highlights of the different activities that are going on at the campus. This leads again to the, uh, website for PR. And, um, we're in this particular case, we're highlighting, uh. This new story for Dr., uh, the plaque that was in the tree for Dr. Sarah Cavasco. And then the board of trustee elections, we have that information here. So again, it's a work in progress and of course, all the legal stuff down here that pertains to the, to the college that we're required to have down there by law. Um, so again, it's a, it's a work in progress. The, the team will continue working with the departments to continue making, um, improvements. But, um, we have received some good feedback again, uh, from students. It's easier to navigate, easier to find what they're looking for. So, uh. Believe from what we've heard, we're, uh, on the right track. We're going to continue improving it.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ramos.
Director, I mean, this is, there are going to be, I don't know, I haven't seen it. Is there a section for the alumni and for the?
There will be, uh, donor, uh, donor relations and alumni will have a spot. Actually. Eventually we'll add to where it says enroll passport directory and jobs. There'll be a button that will say donate now.
Okay.
And then, uh, under campus live, there should be, there will be an alumni button.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very, very nice. Thank you, Mr. Travis. Next item is thirteen D, notification of the serving of alcohol, beverages, beverages. At Translator Laredo College Holiday Party, as per Laredo College Board Community and Governmental Relations Policy, GTA Local. Community use of college district facilities conduct on college district permits. Dr. Minita Ramis.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, we're, uh, hopefully planning a, a little something for our donors, um. For the holiday season this December. So I wanted to make sure that we got this, uh, approved before we started even planning that event. Uh, to the main, and it will be at the commander's home unless weather does not permit, in which case we may have to move to another, uh. Uh, venue on campus. And so we'd like to, to get your permission to, to serve adult beverages if, if we can.
So I'm hoping, I'm sure.
It's just information. It's okay. Thank you, Dr. Ramis.
The next meeting date will be Thursday, December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-second, six P M, regular board of trustees meeting. Have a motion to adjourn. Second, have a motion by Mr. Lio, the second by Ms. Ramos. A discussion, none heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good night, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.